Good morning. Today is Monday, September 20 of 2021. Notice has been given of a special meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. It will be held this day at this time. Our location is Grimes County Annex Building 114, West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas, at which time the following subjects will be discussed and acted upon to wit. Agenda item number one, this meeting has been called to order. Agenda item number two, as Harry Walker, our road and bridge engineer, you have agenda items two, three, and four. We'll take them one at a time. Number two is consideration and award of annual contracts for mowing, culverts, tree trimming, and removal. So actually, it's not mowing culverts. Mowing's one contract. Culvert's is one contract, and tree trimming and removal is another contract.
We mow the culverts regularly anyway.
Prefer we eat around them, but okay.
Yeah. Last week, we opened bids on the three annual contracts the judge just mentioned. First contract was for mowing. We only received one bid. That was from Wayne Poole, who has the current contract. They bid, we bid this by location. Location A, $9,348. Location B, $16,356. And location C, $6,156, at an hourly rate of $85 if we do next door. Their pricing is up about $2,000 from last year across all three areas. But again, we knew, we were expecting prices to go up because of the fuel costs this year. So we are recommending award of the contract to Wayne Poole LLC at this time.
Mr. Foulks, should we take these one at a time, or is it all three okay?
Didn't matter. It's turned up to you, Burke.
Since there's only one bidder there.
And the second contract?
I'm sorry. Just to keep it straight. I'll make a motion to accept Wayne Poole's bid on the mowing.
Second.
There's a motion by County Judge Joe Foulk on a portion of agenda two, which applies to the mowing contract. It's seconded by Commissioner Barbara Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. That's a four, zero vote. Would the clerk make note that Commissioner Malick is not present? Mr. Walker, if you continue to culverts, please, sir.
The culvert bid, we received two bids, one from Wilson Culverts and one from Preferred Pipe Distributors. Preferred Pipe only sells HDP pipe, which we do not use for our road crossings. Therefore, their bid was not considered. Wilson Culverts has had our contract for many years. In this case, the bids are actually a price sheet. Again, prices are up somewhat, not a big surprise. But we are recommending approval of Wilson Culverts for the annual culvert supply contract for the Road and Bridge Department.
I'd make the motion that we approve Wilson Culverts for the culvert contract.
Second. There's a motion before the court on a portion of agenda item number two in regards to culverts by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Obiansky. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll now move on to tree trimming and removal.
Last contract we opened was for tree trimming services. We received two bids, one from Brock Construction and the other from Flores Tree Services. Brock Construction had a, for conventional trimming, $125 an hour. It's a flat rate. Pulse saw trimming, $105 an hour. Flores bids were $165 for each of those items. Brock has our current contract. Flores has had our contract in the past. But we are recommending that contract be awarded Brock Construction at the range quoted. These are actually slightly down from last year.
Did you say Forest was one of the?
Flores.
Forest.
Flores.
Was it just that? Or three?
Two or three did it?
Two.
Two, okay. Brock Construction and Flores.
I move that we approve Brock for tree trimming and removal services.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number two, the tree trimming and removal portion by Commissioner Philip Cox, seconded by Commissioner Barbara Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's go to agenda item number three, consideration and approval to allow one-year extension to the annual contracts for, one, flexible base fuel, the two, fuel, three, contract hauling, four, cold mix, five, bridge labor construction. Are each of these a annual bid also?
These are annual contracts. Our annual contracts are set up with an option for one-year extension. This year, we were able to extend five of the eight contracts. We felt like the service we'd been receiving from these vendors was good and that the pricing based on last year's bid was probably going to be better than if we rebid it. So we exercised the option to extend these contracts if y'all agree.
I make the motion to approve, allow a one-year extension to the annual contract for flex base, fuel, contract hauling, cold mix, and bridge labor construction.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number three by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Obiansky. Just for the record, what's the name of the company that the extension goes with?
The flexible base is Frost. I forget what the rest of their name is. Fuel.
Creston.
Pardon?
Creston.
Cross Creston. Good memory.
I think.
Fuel is Key Performance. Contract hauling is Clayton Heiss. Cold mix is Waller County Asphalt. And bridge labor construction is Nalen Bridge.
Thank you, sir. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll now go to agenda item number four, approval of a solar source designation for Arcosa Lightweight Aggregate.
The, Arcosa Lightweight Aggregate provides the aggregate we use for the topping our chip seal projects. They are the only supplier in this region. Therefore, we have a sole source designation for that firm. We've had this for the last several years. We were recommending that their sole source letter be approved again this year.
I move that we approve the sole source designation for Arcosa Lightweight Aggregate.
Second.
There's a motion before the, there's a motion before the court on agenda item number four by Commissioner David Obiansky, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Walker, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for this year?
I hope so. Actually, we have to come back later on still and bid our asphalt promotions. We usually bid that in the spring.
Okay.
Right before the paving season.
Okay. Before 2021, getting ready for 2022. To get you started, everything's covered now?
Everything's in place now.
Excellent. Okay. We'll go to agenda item number five, Toledo Coleman, review and take action to approve reclassification of Maintenance Community Service Coordinator. It was, let me, I guess, set the stage for the commissioners. It was brought to my attention that because of the increases, increase that we had, salary increase that we had placed in this position, and we put the salary increase on the basis of the increased job duties and responsibilities, the job description, it was necessary to review and update that job description, and then it's proposed that we reclassify. So at that point, Toledo, I'll let you take it.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner. So going off of what the judge just stated, after Commissioners Court approved raises and the new salary for the new fiscal year, I started going through some files to make sure and update the salary structure and noticed that Mr. Peeler's job description was way out of date. Actually, what we had on file was when he was classified as a six, and he's had a couple of different changes since then, from a six to department head one to a two. And now, after going over the new job descriptions, and because he has a degree and the county is using his degree at this time, we are making the recommendation that he be moved to a professional one.
So on the position that, that's making a decision based on the individual in the position, we may in the future decide to hire somebody that doesn't have a college degree?
Correct, which is why it's stated as preferred and not required. The next agenda item is going to go over the salary structure, and if you notice on that, I left it in two different positions. I left it in the department head two, and then I placed it also in the professional one. That way, it would give the Commissioners Court option.
You left it where?
On department head two and put it in professional one.
Why would we not put it in just department head three? It's the same salary, and there's no requirement for the degree.
That's an option as well. We just don't have any positions in there. And because he has a degree and y'all are using his degree, that would just give you more flexibility. But it's totally up to the court. I mean, this is, this is why I'm coming to you guys.
Commissioner, we could do that, but one of the things that kind of derailed that thought process was if you look in the department head two, one of the requirements there for the first position up at the top, it says 15 or more employees, and Mr. Peeler's department does not consist of 15 or more. I did ask the question, okay, would it count when he's doing the community service? And then I was advised that those aren't employees, so that would really not satisfy that commitment as we have it currently written. So yes, department head three is an option, professional one is an option. And I think, as Toledo, you just said, either one of those would satisfy the salary adjustment. Is that correct?
Correct. We could move under the department head two, where it says manages daily operation and maintenance of multiple county facilities. If the court chooses on the next agenda item, we can make that correction and move it there if you would prefer him to be as a department head three.
Can I ask a question? I thought that, I'm sorry, I'm not talking to your back, so you don't talk to the court.
That's okay.
I was looking at the. It's my understanding that when you designated somebody as a professional before, it's because they had a license or a certificate or something beyond just a college degree, because you have lots of folks that have college degrees, and that doesn't necessarily make them a professional versus of the salary structure. Is that right, or is that wrong?
Well, if, my understanding is that if their degree applies to the work that they're doing, then it applies to the job. But if you had somebody that had an accounting degree that was going to be the director of maintenance, that probably would not, that degree would probably not satisfy the degree portion, if I understand what you're saying.
Well, let's say you all don't have, you all pay no probation, but from juvenile probation, if they have a degree, it's a CJ degree, then theoretically, you'd be saying they're a professional because they're applying their CJ degree, but it's not required to have a CJ degree. You could have a basket weaving degree, and so that would mean that one of the two juvenile probation officers is a professional and the other isn't, based upon their different types of degrees. I thought it wasn't determined based upon whether they had a college degree. For instance, Mr. Walker has a license or a certificate that's beyond college degree, so do I. And so I thought the folks that were professional or put in that category weren't just folks that had a bachelor's degree, but went on, but had some additional certification. That was my recommendation.
Jesse, you were wanting to make a comment, or refuse, or no longer wanting to make a comment?
So you're saying this is a?
I'm just asking questions, because if I'm going based on my recollection, I don't want there to be an issue where folks feel like they're in a box, that the person has to be a professional to be who Al is today. There wasn't really a requirement that that person be a professional previously, and I just would not want to put this court or any other court in the box if that's not really what we, that's why I asked.
Right, right. I would address the department head two, and I agree with John, but I would also want you guys, you had brought up department head three. Department head three is actually at, I don't, there's no indication of what the description that department head three falls under currently right now, but it's a, it's a pretty good difference between department head three, the $34 to $40, to the professional one, which is $20 to $35. So that, that's where I was kind of looking at as well, is your pay scale and how that's falling in line with all of that. But as far as the juvenile probation, it was that it was degree plus additional certification.
Well, setting, setting the juvenile aside, with the amount of extra duties that we've placed in that position over the last 12 to 18 months, one, project manager, two, we're now giving oversight of the hospital maintenance, and not that you haven't done an excellent job on that, Commissioner Walker. Al's going to bring a different perspective to that position, and he's going to be working back and forth with the person that they've hired in more of a, I'll say, professional or technical way that probably Commissioner Walker didn't have the skills to do. I'm not cutting you short.
No, no. I don't take any offense at all. I'm just, I'm following, I'm following Jesse when she's talking about department head three. You're talking about putting him, you put this position also in department head two.
Right.
Right, so she put it in either or. So if you, from my understanding from Toledo, is if he's degreed and he's utilizing the degree, then he would fall in professional one.
Correct.
And if he were to leave and you were to hire in, then they did not have a degree, they would fall back to department head two, is that what you said?
Correct, yes. That gives the court options. It's not tying your hands to having to put somebody in as a degreed position for the facilities director.
So what is the, what is the urgency in putting him as a professional one?
It's to keep us in line with our salary structure because of the raises that were approved in Commissioners Court last week. I'm having to update the salary structure, and this is going to keep us in compliant with the new salary structure.
But if you have it in two positions, doesn't it still keep it in line with the salary structure?
He's currently, that position's not under professional one. I'm requesting the court to add it to professional one, so it will keep us in line. Because if you don't, if we don't move him, he's going to be noncompliant with the salary structure, based on his salary. Based on his salary rate for the new fiscal year, he will not be in compliance with the salary structure, leaving him as a department head two.
Okay, so that, that's the problem. I'm just trying to find the, so he doesn't fall within that pay scale on department?
No, ma'am.
But he does, he would on department head three.
Yes, sir.
He would be at the, his new current salary rate would be right at the top of the start.
So why, why we don't have a description? I'm sorry.
So whenever the salary structure was done, which was way before my time, the salary committee at that time didn't feel that there was any positions that met that criteria, and so they, they never created any type of job titles for that one. So we have no.
We never put any criteria in?
No, ma'am, there's never been any criteria in there.
Just didn't have it in there.
Correct.
Why is the, why is the salary jump so big?
I don't know.
From one to another? You may want to look at that as well, if you aren't thinking about placing it in that department head three.
Because that is a big.
It's a very.
Oh, you don't have the starting salary?
Yeah, it goes from $22 to $34.
Well, because I think at the time when they did it, the ending salary rate, I think they started at a couple of dollars more for the next level up, and it just do that in that category. I mean, like I said, this is before my time, so.
It doesn't do it prior to the other ones, though.
If I remember correctly, we didn't have para professionals at that time. We came up with para professionals.
Afterwards.
Yes.
A couple of years ago, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Y'all just make stuff up. Willie nitty. But at first, we didn't have para professionals was not in there. And that may be, but you never saw any of the old salary structure with a description in there?
Not to my knowledge. There hasn't been, there was nothing placed in department head three, and at the time, there was nothing placed in grade 10, but that will be addressed later with the road and bridge restructuring that was approved last week.
So where was the, where were the juvenile probation officers?
They were, they were where you have them. They.
They were always there, were they? If I remember correctly?
They never moved out because they're degreed and have an additional certification.
Juvenile probation is professionals, not para professionals. Your para professionals are your.
What profession?
Yes.
So one thing I think the court needs to focus on is not that the individual like Commissioner Cox brought up, but this position in general, what is it that y'all are expecting for this position from now until the future? Because if he, if he is leaving, or if he ever does leave, if this is your position, you don't want to teeter totter back and forth based on the person. I think it's what are you expecting for this position?
Which is what we've always said.
Right, it should be based on the position.
It should be, yes, it should be based on the position, but I will say, because of the individual that we have in that position, and because that individual is degreed, we've taken advantage of that. So at least from my perspective, my expectation of that position is at a higher level than what he was originally hired for.
So that degree position is a benefit to the county and to the citizens?
Absolutely.
So would you require that degree from this point forward? If it's that much of a benefit to the citizens, you would think that the court would say, okay, we realize and we see the benefit of this degree position, so from this point forward, this is what we're going to require if things were to change.
Okay, and that's the, that's the corner. I think we're trying to put something, I think we're trying to put personal attributes in a, in a, in a position where we need to be looking at the job. If the person that comes after Al, if this salary structure is still in existence at that point, the person may be qualified with a college degree, and I think we need to take that into consideration. I think we need to protect the professional one classification such as, Kenny, attorney suggested that it requires a degree and some type of certification. That's just my opinion. If you place this position in the department head three and you go by the job description, the education says college degree is strongly preferred, but it's not required.
Right.
So I think we, we, and it's just my opinion, I think we leave professional one alone. We can accomplish what we need to accomplish by putting it in department head three. It falls in the same salary range, and we can utilize that description that we have where degrees optional, and if they have more qualifications, then we still have room to adjust those salary considerations based on the qualification.
Can you condense that thought down into a motion? Would you?
I will. I don't, yes, sir, I can, but I just want to make, check the next agenda item.
Wait, the department?
Well, the next agenda item is review and take action to approve revised Grimes County salary structure.
So one of the thing I think we need to change on this salary structure.
This is not, this is not. I'm saying there's no one in department head two.
Ladies, one minute, please. Commissioner Cox.
There's a, the, the description of the job on, or the position, on salary scale is Maintenance Community Service Coordinator. On this, it's Facilities Director, Community Service Coordinator. I think we need to stay consistent with what the job description is.
Okay.
And it should be, in my opinion, Facilities Director and Community Service Coordinator. This is the job description.
And that's what we would put in three?
Sure.
Okay, sir, go.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we include Facilities Director, Community Service Coordinator in department head three classification, and title that position according to the job description, Facility Director and Community Service Coordinator.
Commissioner Cox, are you going to address the range?
Can I get a second before we have discussion, please? A second. I've got a second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number five by Commissioner Philip Cox, seconded by Commissioner W., David Obiansky. Is there any discussion? Court recognizes our agenda item, Ms. Jesse Murph.
Okay.
That's all right.
The, are we going to address the range for the department head three because it doesn't really fall in line with what we're currently?
Well, is that not what we're going to do on the next agenda item?
On the next agenda, as long as we do that on the next.
Yes.
That's all right.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. There's a motion on agenda item number five, again, by Commissioner Philip Cox, seconded by Commissioner David Obiansky. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. We'll go to agenda item number six, review and take action to approve revised Grimes County salary structure. So we have a prototype in front of you?
Yes.
Adjustments we should make on that, my opinion?
So all of the salaries, the high end of the salaries, with the exception of any of the LE positions, was increased by the 5% COLA, which is what was approved last week in court, which then in turn also adjusted the tenure rate, so you'll see those highlighted for you on all the grade levels. The law enforcement positions, the top dollar range was increased by $3, and then, of course, that adjusted the tenure rate as well. Just going down, grade one, we're adding the Maintenance Community Service, or not Maintenance Community, it should just be Maintenance Part-Time. That's the part-time clerk that was approved for his new position.
So we're striking out Community Service?
Why are you striking that out?
He's been, the part-time's not going to be Community Service.
Duty.
It's just Maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a copy paste and error.
Maintenance Service.
Yeah, it's just Maintenance Service, and it's part-time. We removed the livestock officer and the librarian LE because we created a part-time LE position, which you'll see later on down in the document. So that's the only changes that was done to grade one. Grade two, the only adjustment was the salary range. Yes, sir.
I'll let you walk us down this, but so we don't get confused. Are there any questions, commissioners, on the adjustments made in one? Seeing none, this is number two, then.
So grade two, the only thing that was changed was the salary range. That was increased by the 5%.
Everybody good with that? Okay, three?
Grade three, we adjusted the salary range as well as adding a Maintenance Clerk. That is the clerk position that was approved for this upcoming budget for Mr. Peeler's department. Al and I got together and we did a job description, and it could kind of teeter on either a three or four, but based on the salary range, we feel that it could fit in the clerk three position, because that position's not really going to have any financial responsibility, so that's why we chose to place it there.
Do we have to list it?
It will be when it's available. It's fixing to run in the paper next week.
But on here?
It's, as a grade three, Maintenance Clerk. It's as a Grade Three, Maintenance Clerk.
But over here in your positions, are you putting it in Maintenance Clerk, Maintenance Clerk initially?
It's the last one on the sheet. Did you, are you looking at-
Are you down it?
No, Grade Three.
This morning.
It's a revised one.
It's a revised one this morning, Grade Three. We initially had placed it in Four and then after discussing with the Auditor's Office and then having a conference with Al this morning, we chose that Grade Three would be a better, yes ma'am, that's why I gave you updated copies.
This is all hot off the press, Commissioner.
Y'all had me working overtime, I'm just telling you.
One change on that, I would request that you make is remove those four stars because those four stars currently say that the salary is determined by-
Yeah, that's just for me to know, to add. That was for my personal.
So you're going to take those off?
Yes, sir, I'm taking those off. That was just one that I wanted to make sure that I pointed out that it's new.
Toledo, will that Maintenance Clerk position also be added in the description column?
It's General Admin. It's already there. Any questions on Grade Three? Grade Four, we adjusted the salary range as well as adding the Crimes Victim Liaison. That was a grant funded position up until this year and now it's back underneath the county and so I placed her there, which would, where she was previously before the grant came in, so I just added her back to that position or that grade level. No questions? Grade Five, we adjusted the salary range. All the positions stayed the same with the adding of the HR Assistant that was approved last May. Okay, Grade Six, there was no changes to positions, just increasing the salary range as well as Grade Seven. Grade Eight, we just adjusted the salary range as well. Grade Nine was a salary adjustment. Grade Ten is new. This is where the court agreed to place the Road and Bridge Area Superintendent, so we eliminated the General Superintendent, which was a Department Head Two, and we're placing the Area Superintendents based on job description into Grade Ten.
And we did upgrade those job descriptions, didn't we?
Yes. Harry presented those at the time when the court voted to make the change. No questions? LE Part-Time, this is where we moved the LE Part-Time positions. That's your Livestock Officer and Librarian as well as a salary adjustment. LE One, Two, Three, Part-Time LE Three and LE Four were all salary adjustments. And those are the ones that were increased by the $3. LE Five will strike out the DA Investigators. Those actually go under a Para Professional category. I believe that's where they were prior to the grant and then when I was making adjustments, I placed it there and then after discussion with the County Auditor's Office, we're going to remove that one because they fall underneath a different category. LE Six and Seven are just salary adjustments. Your Department Head One, there's no changes in position there, that's just a salary adjustment as well. Department Head Two, we're removing the Road and Bridge Superintendent. That position is now obsolete. We are going to remove the Maintenance Community Service Coordinator. That job title is going away, so there will be nothing left in Department Head Two. Department Head Three is where we're going to place the Facility Directors according to the job description. And this is where we were going to discuss salaries.
And were you and Jessie having a discussion about their salaries?
I was discussing Department Head Two, how that will now be blank because-
Okay, so where previously Three was blank, now Two's going to be blank.
Right.
And that fifteen or more, that was what was for-
Road and Bridge, I believe.
Road and Bridge, correct.
I think what was brought up about the salary is now if there's no position in Department Head Two, that's a big gap from Department Head One to Department Head Three. If the court was going to make any salary adjustments to the Department Head Three salary range, or we're going to leave it as is. Is that right, Jessie?
Yeah, I, it just jumped from 22 to 34 as your starting point and so I didn't know when you look at the entire pay grade or salary structure, it doesn't jump that much from floor to floor when you look at the different rates.
And also the, what, the salaries are different in here, not only the beginning salary, I guess this tenure? Will that remain the same?
The tenure?
Whatever you-
Well, it depends on whatever, if you adjust the low end to the high end, the first two numbers, that will ultimately affect the tenure based on what the high end number is. You'll increase that high end number by $1.20 because that's what our current tenure rate is.
And we've been maintaining how much of a differential between the bottom and the top typically?
I think the last time we did the calculation was 25.
25 is what we used?
I believe so, because I'd come to court, was requesting a 40%, but we said wait until the budget was approved.
Well, if you brought the Department Head Three to a $25 an hour starting rate, that would kick the top to 35 and then if you put tenure in there, then make it to 36.20. If you drop it that much, would that still satisfy what our current need is?
The starting, how much would the high end, what would it be?
The high end would be 35.
He's at 34.62 is what was budgeted.
Say again?
He's at 34.62.
Then you're going to be dealing with a problem potentially again. I don't know.
What's the problem just leaving that is?
I have no problem.
There's not, Professional Three is higher than a Professional Three. So if you're just looking at the pay grade, the structure, so a Department Head Three is higher than a Professional Three.
So-
Which-
Professional Three starting, it's the starting, the starting pay.
The starting, the top end is-
Right, the starting, yes, yes.
So we can make the Department Head Three start the same as the Professional Three? If you wanted to keep it more in line with that.
So if you did that, that would take it to 37.50. And then add a $1.20 to that would take you to 38.70. But I'm kind of along the line with Commissioner Cox, just leave it as it is.
Okay, so you leave it at the higher rate and then the other, as John mentioned, the other Professional One, Two and Three are to be degreed and have in addition to state certification and those are a lower starting pay. The Department Head Three is required with just a degree and it's a higher starting pay.
As it is right now?
Leave it as is right now?
That's how it's lined up right now.
Right, because we haven't used it and so it really wasn't assessed at that time. I don't believe.
Well, there was a recommendation if we put the starting pay the same as a Professional Two, Professional Three at 30 versus the 34. That does take it up again than, like I said, 37.50 and 38.70. Let's leave it like it is and then let the HR do their subject matter review on something similar or similar for the time being, because we can always come back and change it, but it does satisfy our need at the current time.
So y'all leave the salary range as is?
Yeah, well, I mean, we can, we can adjust as needed.
Yeah. We can bring it back before the court and adjust the salary range if need to. Okay, so we're going to leave as is for salary.
Okay, Paraprofessional One?
That was just salary adjustments there. Paraprofessional Two was a salary adjustment and then we removed the CBC caseworker slash investigator because that was grant related. Paraprofessional One now will go back to the way it was, which just had juvenile probation officers in there, so we'll mark through the Maintenance Community Service Coordinator that's being replaced by the Department Head Three Facilities Director. There was no changes in positions, just salary adjustments for Professional Two and Professional Three. And then on your last page, we are removing grant funded from the DA caseworkers and CBC liaison. Your investigators there went under Paraprofessional, I mean, not Professional Two, that's where your DA investigators are currently classified and that's where they were classified prior to the grant taking effect.
Agenda Item Number Six, I'll make a motion based on the review.
We're going to have a discussion?
Not until we get motions?
Never mind.
On Agenda Item Number Six, I make a motion that the review is appropriate and we will take action to the adjustments that have been stated to approve revised Grimes County salary structure. Is there a second? Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Six, County Judge Joe Faust, seconded by Commissioner David Obianski. Is there any discussion? Mr. Walker, the court recognizes you.
One thing I would ask y'all to consider, we passed a cost of living increase this year of 5%. We've had at least one, if not two, other cost of living adjustments just in the time I've been here. This year we increased the top end of the salary by that cost of living amount, but we have never adjusted the bottom of our salary grades to reflect, cost of living is going up, but we still seem to have an expectation that we can hire people in at the entry level at the same price, same rate that we had four or five years ago. I'd ask you to consider also raising the bottom starting salaries for each position by the cost of living amount also.
Comments, Commissioner?
That is, it might understand that they have to hire, you have to hire in at that low, low bottom?
We don't have to, but the budgeting is set up typically around that and if it's not budgeted for more than that, then we have to hire at that amount.
Yes, right, so if you were to change it now, it would cause a problem as far as what's in the budget. That's something that definitely is worthy of discussion, but maybe at the time of next budget year, maybe around May or whenever we start working our following budget.
I just wanted to, while you bring that up, I wanted to make sure-
Yes, yes.
And, you know, certainly not trying to cause issues with the budget, but it seems like we do ourselves a disservice. If I were to hire a light equipment operator today at $13 an hour, October 1st, he'd make him 5% more than that. If I hired that same position on October 1st, he only gets the $13 an hour. So it seems like it's an inconsistency that I think that bottom level ought to come up when we do cost of living adjustments. I don't think it causes any real harm if we waited until the next budget year to do that. I think as a matter of policy, y'all need to consider that.
Thank you. Any additional comments? With that, we, on Agenda Item Number Six, there's a motion before the court by County Judge Joe Faust, seconded by Commissioner David Obianski. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. I want to thank Toledo and I want to thank the Audit Service for your discussion and kind of making this help, or help it so we make it happen.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Seven by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Obianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You adjourn.